...time to cover all the issues. So if you feel that your question was not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidate directly after the forum. And now, I'd like to introduce you to our moderator, Darcia Dearking. Darcia is certified, is a certified moderator for the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County.
We will start the candidate forum with the opening statements. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for their opening statement. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office, beginning with the candidates for mayor, Margot Steffel, Doug Williams, Mark Winchettle. Then, we will hear from the candidates for city council ward one, Paula Geisler and John Grau. And finally, candidates for city council ward four, Greg Anderson, Michaela Hatfield, and Charles Steck. I apologize. Not ward four, okay? The order of answering questions and the closing statements will be rotated based on a randomly generated grid, with each candidate being given an opportunity to answer first. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. Please note our timekeepers, who have a 30-second and then a 15-second sign, and wait for timekeepers to rate signs. They also have a stop sign, or will call time, to make sure each candidate adheres to the one and a half minutes. The first questions have been prepared by the League of Women Voters, Eastern Carver County. Additional questions will be those submitted by the audience here, and those submitted to the League's email address by the public, candidates, and/or the candidates' campaign. Let's begin with our opening statements.
Thank you. The purpose of the mayor is to set policy and promote the city. I have worked under three different mayors for the city of Chaska. I wrote policy that they approved. So I figured, if I could write the policy, I might as well be the mayor. But more importantly, I grew up in Chaska. I've lived in a half dozen neighborhoods as a homeowner and a renter. I lived through the flood of 1965. I was in eighth grade, and I filled sandbags and laid them around our house down on West Third Street. I was in ninth grade and the last class to attend the old Chaska High School on Fourth Street. My children and I all attended St. John's Lutheran Church and school that my dad helped build. I've worked for numerous local businesses in Chaska, including Ramsland Drug, Cooper's Grocery, Chaska Market. I love the city of Chaska. I've known the people of Chaska for 60 years. I've worked for and patronized the businesses in Chaska for 60 years. I want to represent all the residents and business owners, but especially those who have been forgotten and have told me, as I have been door-knocking, "No one ever comes down here and talks to us." Thank you.
Mine'll be brief. I'm running for mayor. I'm for hiring frees. I don't want any more city employees until they prove that they need them real bad. I see in the paper last week that they were gonna hire two and a half more compliance officers, because they have to have one on the weekend. Well, they got one and a half now, or I don't know how they figure one and a half. I don't know how they figure that. But that other half, or whatever, can, can work on the weekends, and then Saturday and Sunday, and then the other three, or other three days, they can double up and see what they go. I didn't like that 4.9% increase. Those people would have to really, have to prove to me that they need to, additional people. I'm for small growth, and I'm not really...
Mark Winchettle.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. I'd like to share a little history about myself. I've been a resident of Chaska since 1973. My work history has been, I worked 13 years for the Chaska Public Works. I worked 27 years at St. Louis Park Fire Department, retired as a chief. Nine years as the Chaska Mayor. My volunteer experience includes youth football and baseball coach, a Chaska High School baseball coach, 21 years in the Chaska Fire Department, 18 years with the Chaska Cubs, many years with Christmas and May, Guardian Angels Church and Cemetery, to name a few. As you can see, I've been extremely busy in our community over the past 40 years. Becoming the mayor nine years ago was an extremely humbling and very rewarding. I would like to say thank you to the residents for this wonderful opportunity. Over the past nine years, we, the council, and staff have gotten a multitude of things accomplished. To name a few, Fireman's Park development, downtown street reconstruction, streetscaping, Carver County rebuild, Highway 41 rebuild, Southwest Chaska, West Creek Corporate, and finally, a dog park, and many other redevelopment projects. On this coming Veterans Day, we're gonna be holding the dedication for the new Veterans Park, and in 2019, we're gonna have a new interchange at 212 and 44, which will open new commercial industrial lots. There is, however, much more to accomplish, and that's why I'm seeking reelection. Thank you.
Paula Geisler.
I'm a little under the weather, so if my voice cracks, bear with me. I just wanna thank you for inviting me here tonight. I can say that it has been an honor, serving the city of Chaska for the four years that I have. It's been a very busy four years, and my, my history is that I was, for most of my work history, I was an executive assistant for multi-billion dollar worldwide corporations. Before I came to Chaska, I worked for a city, and basically, it was a one-person office. So I did, by myself, what we have multiple staff here to do, obviously, a smaller city, but still the same compliance, the same statutes, to follow the same deadlines, same reporting. So I learned a great deal about how a city runs, what you have to do to run a city, what to do to be in compliance, and I found quite a few things they weren't doing that I fixed while I was there. And when I came to Chaska, I really missed it, and I wanted to find a way to, I was retired, so I wanted to find a quick way to get to know my community, feel a part of it, and also serve the community. So that's why I decided to run for council four years ago, and I have loved every minute of it. We have had a lot of huge projects, and I'm really proud of them, and, and the newest one coming up is the Veterans Park. I hope you can all attend the dedication of that. More to come, so thank you for having me.
John Grau.
Good evening. My name is John Grau. I live at 3877 Carver Path in Chaska. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, as well as the numerous events they've hosted up towards Election Day. My wife and I have called Chaska home for 11 years. We have two boys, Elijah, who is six, Noah, who is three. We love calling Chaska home, as it provides amazing events, venues, parks, tons of slides for the kids to go down. It makes Minnesota, or excuse me, Chaska feel like the best small town in Minnesota. I graduated from Gus Davis Adolphus College with a bachelor's in arts and political science and business management, and I'm currently a human resources professional for a large manufacturing company in the southwest metro. My career in human resources has taught me to listen first, and everyone bring something of value to the conversation. Most importantly, it's taught me how to be a leader. I've been on the park board for nine years, with the last three years serving as the chair. I'm very proud of the projects that I've been a part of and worked with the council to accomplish, the dog park, Fireman's Park, those types of things. I have a passion to serve others. I believe the greatest accomplishment we can have as an individual is to make a positive difference in someone's life. That is why I'm running for city council. My early priorities for the city of Chaska are as follows. First, protect the ward system for how it's worked for the city of Chaska. Second, develop a strong sustainability plan, so what's great now in Chaska remains great. Thirdly, promote responsible growth that's inclusive to all residents and future residents. I am a proven leader that can ensure the values of transparency, honesty, service, and respect remain hallmarks of the council and Chaska. Thank you for tonight.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League for having an event like this. It's nice to be able to get together and, and talk about ideas, and do it in a civil way, and so, thank you. And thank you for everybody for coming, because it's really important, I think, that people get engaged. I've, my wife and I moved down to Chaska here in 1993, so I feel a little bit like a carpetbagger, 'cause I'm not been as long as these guys. But we kinda grow to love it right away. We've got three children. We live in Hazeltine Woods. Both, two of my three kids have gone through the Chaska school system. We've done a lot of volunteering, a lot of activities. In most circles, people actually are interested to see that I actually have a name, because in most cases, I'm Cindy's husband. But we, you know, we've really just grown to love this community. And, and so, the reason that I wanted to get involved, I would've gotten involved earlier, but I always thought that Chris and Chad before him had done a very good job of representing our ward. And I just think that we, I've got a business here in town. We've been here for 20 years, and I think that you have a responsibility to give back to the community, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the League. I'm Michaela Hatfield, and I was raised here in Chaska, recently bought a home here. And not only did I grow up here in Chaska, but I've really grown up with Chaska. This town has played such an integral part in who I am today, from the teachers who instructed me, to the VFW and Rotary that gave me scholarships to get my career, college career launched, to now my current involvement with the American Legion Auxiliary as president. I'm running for city council because I wanna serve the city that's done so much for me. Transparency and accountability are my top priorities. You, the residents of Chaska, care about our town, and if elected, you could really count on me to be one to listen, to be available for feedback and concerns. I believe I could bring a unique voice and a fresh perspective on your behalf, engaging the community in what's happening at the local level, and enabling you to be really proactive rather than reactive at times. I'm passionate about Chaska being the best small town in Minnesota, and a place to live and work and play. Chaska has been and will continue to be my home, and I care deeply about what, about its future. Thank you.
Charles Steck.
Thank you guys for having me, and I really wanna thank everybody for coming out here. It's not always easy coming out, and I'm happy you guys all came out. My major things that I'm gonna be working on if I'm elected to city councillor is maintaining the buildings. One of the reasons I'm running was, I took my kids swimming, swimming lessons up the community center, and there was a rainstorm outside, and the rain was literally coming in through the roof, almost as much as I get from my shower. You can't have holes in the roofs. I also wanna build the public library. One of the places I've worked at in Carver County is the public library system. I've also worked in IT, I've worked in property taxes, so I know what it's like when people raise property taxes. People don't like that, and they love to tell me they didn't like it. Right now, I, I work with the state of Minnesota as the assistant records manager at MBOT. Some of my other areas that I wanna hit is the Lyons Park renovation, sustainable growth, and I really wanna stop the power plant in Chaska. I have a master's in public administration. I also have a graduate certificate in urban planning. I volunteer throughout the town. Next week, I'll actually be raking leaves for seniors downtown for, with Guardian Angels. So thank you for having me, and thank you for coming out.
Our first question is coming to Charles Steck first. A lack of affordable housing options is one of the top reasons for homelessness for individuals and families. What can the city of Chaska do to help end homelessness in our community?
There's a couple of different things we can do. In my article in the paper, I said, "We need to have a mixture of not only lower-income housing, but mid and senior housing as well." You need to be able to live in your city for the whole life that you, that you're here, and you need to have options to do that, and that's a very, very major part of my presentation. The way you do that is, there's a couple of different ways. You can increase density, you can require that if they wanna build, they have to build a certain amount as affordable housing. You can code, so that more affordable housing is built. There's a wide variety of different ways to make affordable housing happen, and it's just, sometimes it's having the will to make it happen, and sometimes it's trying to get the builders to build affordable housing.
Margot Steffel.
It happened right over to you. I agree with you. I think the city needs to work closely with the developers, because the developers are the ones that bring the concept plans, and the concept may look good, but if it's, if it's not, like, conducive to what we need in town, as far as affordability for single families, then I think they should keep working on their plans. And I realize that the, the cost of the land is $85,000 to $100,000 an acre, so they wanna make money, but on the other hand, I mean, just because we are close to our one-third affordable housing doesn't mean that we should stop, just because we have one-third and other cities don't. And also, I think now they have, like, the senior place that's going to be built, and my daughter has been working with senior facilities as a recreational program and as a marketing, and look how we had Chaska Heights. So many people can't even afford that, and they ended up putting any age people in there just to fill 'em up. Same with River Gables, so I'm not really sure that we need $500,000 homes.
Thank you. Michaela Hatfield.
I feel incredibly lucky to have moved to Chaska and bought a home on a single income, so I think there's, there's still a need, and as Margot stated, just because we're at that one-third that some cities maybe don't have, that it's, it's not something we can't still ensure we're taking care of. People wanna move to Chaska because it's such a great town to live in. So affordable housing isn't just, you know, the developers, it's, you know, attractive businesses that attract developers that are gonna build those types of houses and, and how you zone. So really, I think with the city council, that's, that just has to be a focus, is ensuring that when we're, you know, when they're zoning, you're being mindful of how you're zoning, and that you're attracting businesses that are gonna encourage the kind of developers you want to come to town, and, and things like that.
Mark Winchettle.
Well, homelessness is, is something that's worldwide, nationwide. It's certainly not a Chaska issue in itself, and for us to solve it would be, if we could solve it, we'd be heroes across the world. But I think that the thing that we have to do is to continue to monitor that. We just had a city survey done, and even though we've been throwing this one-third out, we as a city look at, a good way to create a city is have about one-third affordable, one-third medium, one-third high, higher income. That way, you can follow all steps of your lives if, if you choose to go that pattern. And one of the things that came up in, in our survey was, is that we should be looking at more affordable housing. It wasn't long ago, we needed more step-up housing, 'cause people were moving out because that wasn't available. So we do keep an eye on that, and we have to look at that. Market makes it tough about bringing in affordable housing, like we talked about, lots are high, and developers aren't gonna develop unless they get their money back. So I think there are ways to do that. We've built some senior facilities already, we've got a number of them out there, we've got a few other ones, and, and I think the city itself, if you really go around, there are a fairly good amount of, of low-income housing. The problem is, is they fill so fast, and, and that's the challenge that we, we have. Thank you.
Greg Anderson.
As somebody who sells houses, I have a little bit of a sensitivity around that. There's, we really need to break that down into different aspects. One would be homelessness, that's one issue. One is affordable senior housing, one is affordable entry-level housing, and some of the ways that the city can affect that would be, like Michaela mentioned, through density. But additionally, there's some soft cost issues. As an example, there's a project out here, they're $23,000 per lot for soft costs, they're $28,000 per lot in infrastructure costs. You know, so much a lineal foot for sewer, water, curb, gutter, all of that. Then they had to buy the dirt, and with the demand, with the increased demand, with the proximity now with the 212, the speed of execution. When we moved to Chaska, it took 32 minutes to get to 494, and now it takes nine minutes from my house. So the, with that comes demand, and so then the raw land value goes up. So it's difficult for the city to say to someone who's got a big track of land that, you know, you should, we should be able to cap what you can get for that land. So there's density issues that we can address, there's soft cost issues that we can address, but the homelessness is another, that's really a separate question. We do have the most amount of affordable housing in Eastern Carver County relative to our neighbors, and it's still not enough, and I'm mindful of that every day.
Thank you. Doug Williams.
It's just a, a problem. Land, the cost of land is probably the big part of it, as far as the cost of the housing and whatever. It's, I think it's just a matter of keeping the, getting land cheap. There should be cheap land around. The more the, the more that you're closer into town, the more the land is gonna cost, but farther you get out it, it's cheaper. You might have to go out, outside the city to build this, these affordable housing, more Brandon Dales, condensed housing and stuff, but it is an issue, and homelessness is another issue that, that, that can be solved by, well, not solved, but, but by families, that homelessness. Affordable housing, they're two different things, as far as affordable housing and homelessness, homelessness.
Thank you. John Grau.
I agree with what's kind of set up here. I think there is a distinction between affordable housing and homelessness. I can address both of those. I, I agree, homeless is a hard issue to solve. I, I do think you gotta support the groups and the organization, the churches, the organization that do support people and individuals in need. I think the other key for helping homelessness is getting the stigma out of there. You know, we don't communicate effectively when we talk about homelessness. People immediately think of the movies, and that's not really the case. People, good people are homeless, veterans, people who've lost a job, families, that aren't fitting that stigma, but people immediately think of that type of thing. So really working on communication and working with the support groups. On the affordable housing side, hundreds of doors I've knocked on, that has been a concern. I've talked to a lot of people who have just recently moved in, and said, "How hard was it finding a house?" Difficult. I think the thing that concerns me most is, is people who choose to raise a family here. You have two things going on. Cost of, of interest rates are rising, which is gonna make more houses more expensive and less affordable, and then if you're a young family, cost of daycare also continue to rise. And sometimes that means you're choosing where you're living, or you're choosing where you're sending your kids, and sometimes, a lot of people are gonna choose, choose where they send their kids, 'cause they wanna inspire that next generation, and they're gonna work where they wanna live. So I think we need to really work and understand what we can do to, to get people out of those starter's houses faster, as well as really promote development on that kind of low affordable housing kind of market, so we can support all families in the city of Chaska. Thank you.
Paula Geisler.
There's, there's been a great deal of discussion, and I do see low-income housing and affordable housing quite differently. When it comes to private, private property versus private developer, it's difficult for the city to dictate what they do with their land. It is private. It's their land, if they sell it, you know, we could possibly work harder at communicating with them that the need is greater than they might realize. They do wanna make back their money, so the economy drives the cost of the land. It has gone up substantially in a good market, and it's gone down in, in bad markets. I know when I moved here, it was very difficult to find a home under $400,000. They went in a day. So depending on the market, that's the key, is watching the market and working with some of the developers. I think we need to seek them out. I don't think they would necessarily seek us out. Work with some of the landowners, and they may be thinking of selling and not selling yet, but there is a very limited number of starter homes for new families, the aged who wanna scale down the size of the home they're in, et cetera, but it's, it's difficult when it's private versus private. How does the city dictate that? So, thank you.
Thank you. Paula Geisler, you'll be the first to answer the next question, which is, city council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
We have so many in place, because we've had excellent councils ahead of time, ahead of the one that we're currently in. It's important to keep up with and strategize as far as infrastructure improvement. There's so much money spent on streets and roads and, and general infrastructure buildings, as you mentioned, that it's so important to keep an eye on those things and keep them healthy, keep them repaired, keep them in good condition. You would hate to have it just dilapidate and have to spend even more excess money to rebuild the same building. Just like with streets, if you keep them crack sealed and seal-coated in a, in a proper way, we have a whole plan for that. Every year, there's a certain number of streets that are already designated for seal coating, crack sealing, et cetera. But strategies as far as keeping the taxes down, we look at it really closely every year. We want to continue to provide the best assets we can, which Chaska has so many to be proud of, but we have to keep them in good shape, too, so that people will use them and, and they'll be available for other generations to come, so. That's it.
Thank you. John Grau.
I think of three things for a strategic plan. One, I mentioned in my opening, a sustainability plan. You know, Fireman's Park, Dog Park, developments in City Square West, get the shiny gold object, shiny object, get the attention, but really making sure that we're funding and having funds on time, when, when the community center has got holes that need to be patched and need to fix, 'cause that was a brand-new shiny object at one time, too. So really making sure we're making smart decisions, having funds put away, so when something needs to be fixed, repaired, we have a sustainability plan in place. The second thing, as I said, I think it's important that we understand that, when we look at the southwest Chaska area, which I stare out currently at the top of the hill at 3877 Carver Path, to a soybean field this year, kind of the last blank slate in the city of Chaska. So really, understanding what the master plan meant, really following that master plan, and really making sure that we're inclusive and we're making good decisions, which include affordable housing out there. And then finally, I think, you talk about taxes. If you talk to any resident, they're gonna say they pay too much in taxes. I think, you know, we are in the bottom third. I also think it's important, the thing I understand about taxes, is that it's a perceived value. If people feel they're gaining a value out of their taxes, they probably still wanna pay less, but they may be okay. So I think we gotta balance that, communicate well, and make sure people understand, what is the value that their tax dollars are going to, and what services they're getting out of that, and I don't think we do a great job at that currently. Thank you.
Greg Anderson.
Just going right down the line. I think one of the most important things is that we maintain our culture. You know, Chaska is a very unique place. It's a place where you have a sense of contribution, you have a sense of engagement. You know, it's, it's not just a place where, you know, there's so many places where you live. Where we used to live, we'd been there six years, and we got dragged into one of these awful couple showers, and we were the new people, and we'd been there for six years. You know, when you come into a community like Chaska, there's an engagement, there's a, a sense of responsibility and, and contribution. You know, you, you're called to, a famous ex-mayor, it talks about community all the time, and I think that's really the thing that differentiates us from other places in the community, or in the county, rather. I think it's also important that, like, like Spence said before, that we have a sustainable maintenance project for all of the wonderful amenities that we have, that the trails are maintained, that the buildings are maintained, that the, that the, you know, we have a fire department, we have a police department. I also think it's important that we have an understanding of how we manage this growth. You know, the 212 is kind of a blessing and a curse. It's going to change the nature of our community. We're gonna have a lot of new people coming in, and making sure that they feel part of things, making sure that the, that they get, that there's an engagement, that we don't just become one of these bedroom communities that people just sleep in and then do all of their shopping and engagement somewhere else. Sorry, ran out of time.
Michaela Hatfield.
Yeah, I think community engagement is really huge, and as we grow, growth is inevitable, and as I've been out talking to people, I've heard a lot of, we, we want Chaska to stay how it is, we like it how it is, but I think- But I think growth is really inevitable at this point. So, you know, as we're attracting new residents and things, to make sure that we continue to engage the current residents, track new residents, and keep that community engagement really strong. That really is what people like about Chaska, is that they can still go to Target in a town this size and see people they know. And to maintain that, ensure that, you know, as we're, you know, as a city council, that still communicating what's going on. At times, I see a lot of reacting, and I kind of mentioned that in my opening, is there's a lot of reaction at times, and maybe being more proactive about that communication and evolving with the evolving culture in generations and in the town, to ensure that as we communicate, we're communicating appropriately in ways that they're going to see it, and letting that really grow with the town. Taking care of what we have, there's been a bunch of awesome projects that have just happened and are happening, so making sure that we take care of those things and what we have, so we continue to be the best small town in Minnesota.
One of the things that I think that we've been, Chaska's been really good about building things, but again, it's already been mentioned, we're not always the best about maintaining. That's one of the things we've been working on over the last few years, is to get a CIP to be able to fix things, repair things, replace things that we've built in the past. I think we've done a good job. We're starting there, we're not there. I know that we have the issue with the buildings. We're in, we're working on what we can do. We've had so many people look at it now, we're back to building engineers. So that is one of the main things. The infrastructure that we're replacing in all of our downtown streets, sewer, water, electric, all of that is 100-plus years old. So I think those are important, those are things that we were shooting for, for gold. Southwest Chaska, like we were talking about, it's a big slate. We tried to have, how do we plan it properly so that it fits into Chaska? And then that'll roll right into that. We talk about the feel of that small town. We still get that, we hear that from even new people. So that tells me we're doing some right things. We try to keep the local activities and things like that that still make it feel small. And like someone said, you can go to Target and you know a bunch of people you know. Takes you longer to get past the people than it does to do shopping. Lastly, transportation is a huge thing that we've been working on, is to try to expand some of the roads out, in and out of Chaska, and we're continuing to work on that. Thank you.
Margot Steffel.
Do you mind repeating the question? I did not hear all of it.
Sure. City council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
Okay, to follow up on some of the things you're talking about, maintaining city facilities, and that is one of my issues that I'm passionate about. I worked for the city for 17 years. About five years ago, the city administrator asked me to go around and take pictures of things that needed to be fixed in the different buildings and areas of the city, so he could use it in his state of the city address. And I did that. I probably had 50, 60 pictures or more, and I went into all the buildings. The public works building had mold and water running down the walls. They had no room to store brand-new vehicles that sat out in the winter and the elements all the time. Their lunchroom was so crowded that they couldn't all fit in there, and so they had to sit on lawn chairs in the garage bays. The parking lots were bad, the roof leaks, they have buckets in the library. And yet, two and a half years, five years ago, they asked me to do that, and nothing's been done on that since, that I can see. So, and I do realize that with the projects in the city, when you invest in these projects, yes, your taxes are going to go up to help pay for these amenities, even though projects may also generate some income.
Charles Steck.
So this might be a reoccurring thing with me, so I'm going to, you know, they talked about strategies for the city, and part of that is the strategies that I already talked about. It's, you know, maintain the buildings and the roads. That's a big deal. Building the library, we need to be able to have a good library for the city. Lyons Park renovation, sustainable growth. We don't want to have growth just for the sake of growth, we want to have good planned growth. And again, I really want to stress, I want to stop the power plant dead. I'm good.
Doug Williams.
Charles, hit on what I was going to say. Snow growth. We don't have to go wild with building shit. We can go step by step and to maintain what we've got. I see there, I hear that we are going to maybe need a new library because the roofs leaks. Yeah, I've been, I was down there when, in the wintertime, when the water just came down. That's a building issue, or whoever made the building issue, as far as why it's leaking. So like I said, Charles said, maintain what we got. And I'm for, like I said in my opening statement, for hiring frees as far as my main thing, and then a council that listens. I don't think a council that we have now listens. And we have a good opportunity to.
Thank you. The next question comes to you first, Doug Williams. There is a lot of work being done to build new City Square West. What will you do to foster better relationships with business owners to keep them feeling welcomed in Chaska while ensuring they have a place to do business and aren't pushed out?
Well, make them feel at home, not, let's see, just to not raise taxes on them or whatever, and then, you know, that's all I could say.
Thank you. Charles Steck.
So I sat down with the city administrator, and he was talking a lot about City Square West right over here. And to be quite honest with you, I don't know that we need to do it. When I went out and about, and I talked to people, you know, one of the things that they talk about here is community. A lot of the businesses in there build the community in Chaska. The Chaska market is a wonderful place to get your stuff. Stephen Haller is my physical therapist. I don't think we need to get rid of him. And I really don't think that the city needs to do that project. I'm good.
Margot Steffel.
First of all, I don't really understand what the rush is to develop that block, because I thought the idea of developing that block was to include the library. And if the library doesn't even want to be in there, or maybe the real reason is the library isn't going to generate any money for the city, then what is the rush to develop that block? I looked at the concept plans for it, and the concept plans are awesome. They're all the stuff that I like. It's all art and galleries and classes and a public square. But I don't really see that there's a rush to develop that right away. And as far as the business owners, they are those, rent those storefronts along there. I've heard that, oh, we're trying to keep them, you know, together and make it an easy transition for them. Well, you've got a number of different cultures there, and those cultures don't even necessarily get along. And why they all still want them to keep together, I don't think they even do. And I've worked with them, I've worked with tech from the Chaska market with his licensing. Every time I go in the China Pagoda, they ask me, what going on? What's going on? You know, so I really don't think there's a big rush to develop that block.
Michaela Hatfield.
I think City Square West is an exciting project, and to keep the current businesses that are around, really engage them in the process and what is their place in City Square West. So it's not about pushing those businesses out, but rather giving them a newer, fresher place to be, adding needed density to downtown. Some of that density can really help some of the current businesses that are, not just the businesses that are on that block currently, but all over downtown. So I think really just making sure they're engaged in the process so that they know it's not about pushing them out, but rather giving them a place and letting them have a say in it, and really just engaging them. So I think it's an exciting project, and really, it's all how you frame it with, you know, with businesses. It's exciting, it would bring them more business as well. And as I said, I don't think it's about pushing anyone out, but rather just giving them a new, fresher place.
Thank you. Greg Anderson.
I think that the businesses that are currently over there, I mean, I eat at Chaska, I love all the time, I go to the market, I like, and I'm friends with Tim. I like the businesses that are there. But one of the things that gets lost in this conversation is that those are private businesses. That strip mall is owned by an investor, and that investor could very well one day just not renew those leases. You know, those leases aren't moral obligations, they're contractual agreements where they rent the space, they operate their business for a period of time. And if he chose to upgrade his shopping center, those people would be out, they could be out without any kind of compensation package. Currently, the proposal that is being negotiated involves a relocation package from the city to keep those businesses in town. And I think that's absolutely worthwhile. They add to the character. I don't know how many of you saw the Villager article last week, but someone wrote a letter complaining that Chan Aston has become the food court of Carver County. And I don't think that we want to be that. I don't think we, and from the standpoint of where every single restaurant is a national chain. I like the flavor, the culture of having, you know, diverse populations, diverse opportunities for local businesses. And I think that, you know, the city's on the right track in terms of working with that, which is the scope of that question. Thank you.
John Gra.
I think if Chaska continues to want to be the best small town in Minnesota, a vital downtown is key to that. And I think the City Square West does a couple of things. I think there's not a rush to develop it, but I would say it does need to develop. It's a good opportunity to increase density. You know, the businesses down there need more people working and living down there to kind of continue to support that growth. I am pleasantly happy to know that the city is working with those businesses. It's never easy to displace businesses. But the city, for a lot of things, we do the right thing. We work with people, we understand their needs, and I appreciate that, because I know that at first, there were some concerns with those business owners, and even really the workers even, because of understanding their jobs. So I think that's important as well. If you build up that population, you get more businesses, and you get more people living in downtown, that helps all of Chaska, continues that downtown feel, and is very supportive to that growth. I think that we need to continue to keep that cultural center. That is a cultural center of the city of Chaska. It brings uniqueness, it brings flavor, it brings value. You know, you go down there in the summer, you hear different kinds of music playing, and that is great. And different types of food and candy. You know, my kids go into the market, and the types of candy you don't get at the holiday or that type of thing. So it's good to have that cultural diversity in downtown Chaska for vibrancy. Thank you.
Paula Geisler.
I've been a participant on the task force for City Square West, and it's been, we've seen multiple concepts. We've had, we have multiple people from all parts of the city on that task force, just to throw out ideas, do some brainstorming, what would work, what wouldn't. We have business owners, we have the Carver County Library heads on there regarding the library, and it's important to keep it downtown. Different members of the council, different members of citizens from around town. So it's a very diverse group of people who've come together and look at the concepts and see what would work. What I've seen come out of it so far is pretty exciting, because it's a combination of people who would live right there. There would be apartments above retail, there would be full underground parking. We're desperate for parking downtown, and there's going to be a full underground parking space there. The post office doesn't need a full, huge building anymore, a storefront would be sufficient, and we can keep that downtown. But I think it's important to look at it, because it's another gathering place. It's another place where people can get together, and we can program it, and yet have people live there and keep that downtown vibrant. We've got to keep that alive. Thank you.
Mark Winchettle.
So I'd like to just kind of clarify some things here. First off, there's two owners of that whole block over there, and now it's become three, there's been some sold off. But both of those approached the city and asked about redeveloping. It was not a city thought that, hey, we're going to go redevelop that block. And they came to us because they want the city involved, obviously, and obviously, we would want to be involved. So there hasn't been any kind of a hurry. But I, and the other thing, as far as the businesses go, is those businesses have been on month-to-month lease for long before the conversation started about that. So those businesses have been nervous and afraid, and they also want to get something more solid for them, to be on a solid footing. So we have been working with them. It's a very diverse group, we've had multiple translators to work with them. There's talk about everybody that they want to be together. They all don't want to be together because of their different cultures. And we're working with groups that want to stay together, some don't want to stay together. And there's no idea of getting rid of the businesses, they're all going to be relocated, that's our goal. Not saying that some things won't happen, but they will be helped to relocate, they'll get funding to relocate. And this is a long process. If any, if we said we're go today, it's still two to three years away by the time you get everything done. So, thank you.
Mark Winchettle. The next question comes to you first. Please discuss the options or steps that are important when replacing council members who leave before their term is completed.
So there is state law that determines when you can either appoint or do a special election. And I believe that it's, that if it's two years or under, you can do an appointment. And that happens to be the case that we're going to, that we're dealing with right now. And so what we're going to do is, we've put out a notice for a full 30 days for people that are interested in running for that seat. And then at that point, when that closes, we will do interviews with those candidates. Depending on the amount of candidates that we would have, we might have to have second, we could have third. I don't, I'm not sure. The last time we had to do an appointment, we had like eight or nine applicants, which was great. It caused a little more, it slowed the process down because they never expected that. So we don't know until we're done. It closes on October 31st. And once it's closed, we'll determine how many candidates. We're already working on what kind of interview process it'll be, and by the time that we hit that, we should have the interview process all in place and ready to go. Thank you.
Greg Anderson.
I'd call Luke Melkert and ask him. I mean, I think that the process is already in place. I don't really have much in, I don't have a strong opinion on that in one way or the other. I think if we, if it's an open, if it's, if people are aware that there's an opportunity, and they want to contribute, and they want to serve, I think that there's already a vehicle in place for them to come in and get involved. I don't, I guess I'm not clear on how I would answer that question any other way.
Paula Geisler.
The process that we use is following statute. And statute says if it's less than half of their term remaining, then it can be an appointment by the current council members, based on applications and interviews. If it's more than, then you need to either have them on the ballot, or if there's time to, or when the resignation hits, if there's time to do that, or you could hold a special election. Holding a special election is really expensive. It's like doing the upcoming election all over again with the same expenditures. And the seat I'm in currently, when I ran for Ward 1, was, the person sitting there before was an appointed council member. And so Alex filled the remaining portion of someone's seat. And that's kind of one drawback to having a ward system, even though the ward system does work here. It's one drawback that if you move out of your ward, and you've been elected for four years, you can't finish your term because you don't live in that ward anymore. So that's what presented this particular situation where we have an open seat. So. we have an open seat. So, but we were following the process. We're publishing it that there's an opening. People can apply for it and I hope a lot of people do. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Margot Stifel.
I wasn't very happy with the way Jay Rowe did that. Having worked on the elections for over 10 years and organized for the whole city for all four wards, I ran a special election when Mark Winchettle was first started. And a special election costs money, but it's not that expensive. It's about $10,000, okay? And if he had actually resigned, say the beginning of this year, then we would have had to have a special election. To me, having a whole brand-new council onboard, which, say I'm mayor, say one of you, one of you guys will be new, you could possibly be new, everybody is new on, and now you have this person that was appointed by the old council. I, you know, I don't really think that's right. I, I think they, he should have had that position open and that position should have gone on the ballot.
Charles Steck.
When it comes to replacing somebody, you have to follow statute first. It doesn't really matter anything else, one way or another. If it's at a point in time where it needs to be appointed, then you would sit down and talk through and see, you know, who is the best person for that particular spot. I really love Ward Three. What I would look for, if it's from a different ward, do they really love their ward? You know, do they, are, are they built into that ward? And that, that would be something that I, I would look at, or mayor for the city, depending on who it was. But again, you have to follow statute first.
Michaela Hatfield.
I was really glad Mark went first because I wasn't positive on the exact statute. But I think that it really comes down to, you know, whether it is, you know, a special election does cost money and, and where do you want that to fall? Do you want to spend the money on that or potentially, you know, fixing the community center roof? So kind of, those kind of things come into play, but really I think it comes down to electing a city council that you trust to make the right decision if it does come down to an appointment. So, you know, whether it's a special election or an appointment, if you've elected officials that are going to make an appointment based on, on values you've already voted for, you know, that's, that's really, that's important. So, you know, is there, it really does just come down to statute. But again, elect in a city council that you trust to appoint that position if that's what comes, if, if that's what it comes to.
Williams.
Yeah, I didn't like the way Jay Rowe did his resignation. He should have done that way before, long before, so that we could have gotten people on the ballot. I really didn't, I think there was a wink, wink, nod, nod from these people that are on the council. Though like Mark had said before, that he had, he, he couldn't make Jay Rowe resign, but I think, like I said, I think there was a wink, wink, nod, nod as far as when he did, because he could have done it sooner than, so that they didn't have to use the statue for their, for their, how should I say, their pleasure, you know, as far as what, who they want to appoint. Now, the, the same way with Greg Bowles, he, he should be, he should have been, he should have resigned himself because if he wins, hopefully with not, not with my vote, hopefully not with your vote, he can stay on this frickin' council as far as what I'm concerned. He should have resigned too, so that he should have, or that we could have gotten other people on the ballot too for his, his position.
John Gra.
I want to keep the quorum, right? So I, I know I'm not going to call out specific people who resigned. Obviously there's the reason the question came up. I do think it's a personal choice if you're going to resign or not. You know, I, I think personally, if I was in that situation, knowing I was building a house, knowing that I was going to have to move, obviously the timing is uncertain, I would have made the decision to, to open up to, to the vote. That is a very personal decision. People have to make that themselves and I'm not going to pick on anyone differently who, who chooses to do something else. Once you find yourself in that, you know, as I said, you, you are in that statute of what you need to do. I do think you play the game of, is it worth doing a special election? Is it not? Yeah, I, the cost is a good number to look at and kind of what that means. And what is the, what's, you know, it's more than just the cost. It's what is, what's the community want, right? What are you hearing? Do people want that to be a special election? Again, it's value. If there's a value to do that, people aren't going to complain about the cost. If, if people think, hey, we trust the council, we want to appoint someone, I think you, as Michaela said, you got to trust the people that you officially. But I think it is a little unfair to specifically look at directly current things that are upcoming because it is a very personal decision. And again, I will say, if I found myself in that same and similar situation, I would do the best I could do to step down so the normal filing period could be filled, so it could be put to a vote. Thank you.
Remind candidates to stay civil and avoid any personal accusations. Thank you. The next question will go to John Gra first. Suppose a new resolution is on the agenda for next week. It is asking for some money for a new service for citizens. How would you decide how to vote?
Civic engagement. I think you got to understand what people want. The one thing that I think we don't do a great job is communicating with people. Now, we've made some strides. We've got some communication people implies, Facebook, social media. People don't communicate the same way or get information the same way as we used to. So I think you really got to get the information out, get the feedback from individuals. That may mean going door to door a little bit. You know, I've really enjoyed the fact of going door to door and having conversations with people. You learn a lot when you ask people what they love and you learn a lot what people would change. And if, if I really was unsure, I got to look to the city. I got to look to surveys and I got to go to the residents and I got to go to my neighbors and I got to go to people in the ward in, in greater Chaska to really understand, is this something of value or is this something not of value? If it's not value, we shouldn't be spending the money to do it. If people want to do it, then I think we should need to hear from them. But we can't just make gut decisions. We got to really take the time, make sure people understand what's coming up, communicate that out and be effective in that decision-making process.
Thank you. Greg Anderson.
Well, fortunately, people a lot smarter than I am came up with a series of community values and they came up with a mission statement. And I think the important thing is, is, is we consider different proposals that come before the committee is, does this fit? Is this, does this fit with our values? Does it fit with our, with the mission of being the best small town in Minnesota? And then communicate, like John said, communicate, making sure to communicate with your constituents, getting a sense of, is this something that the community wants? Does it fit? I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that, I mean, there's going to be things that we can't imagine at this point that are going to come up. But I think if we have a set of values, we have a, a shared set of beliefs and a shared set of values and a mission statement and a filter that we can use to make the decision, nine times out of 10, we're going to make the right decision.
Hatfield.
I think it boils down to a couple of different things. Some of that is, you know, looking at, at the vision for Chaska. What is, what's been the vision, you know, utilizing those mission statements and, you know, what's been set forth before. But also really utilizing all the tools you can to engage the community. The people of Chaska are so passionate about living here and having a say in it. So really those relationships that are built, having conversations, you know, as a city council person, people recognize you. So when you're in a coffee shop, they're, they're approaching you. What does it look like to bring that up and just say, hey, what do you, what do you think of this? This is on the table for next week. Utilizing tools that, that don't even cost money, like Facebook is a big one. And I think Chaska's done, made a lot of strides in that area in, you know, utilizing Twitter and Instagram and, and Facebook to touch the community and really hear from them. So to continue to use those. If people know what's coming up, they're probably going to have a say on it and listening to that is important.
Doug Williams.
It's just, my answer's going to be brief. It's just listen to people. I think this council doesn't listen to people. And you got to take in what the people say. And if there's, majority isn't always right. You got to understand. It's, majority isn't always right. You can improve things, but the improvements is probably worse than what it was, was. I've noticed that in other things. I could give you an example. I go to the Minnesota State Lottery website fairly often, every day. And now they switched it about a week ago. And the goddamn thing is worthless. The old one is, was the best thing they, they had and now it's worth, as far as I'm concerned, it's worthless. So change is not always good.
Thank you. And please continue to use civil language. Charles Steck.
When it comes to services, it shouldn't happen one week from now, pretty much no matter what. There should be a whole set of things behind it to make sure that, is the service a good thing for the city? People will say, hey, let's do this. Let's do this right now. But then they forget, again, the maintenance cost behind it. Do we need to keep doing it every single week? Do we need to keep doing it every single month? Is there going to be an employee behind it? Is there going to be a sponsorship behind it? How much will the liability be for doing the service? There's a lot of things that go into starting something new. And you really got to sit down and figure out, is this right for the city? Should the city be doing this? And again, it shouldn't happen within a week. Unless they're saying, hey, I'll give you a million bucks tomorrow. I'm like, all right, fine. I'll, I'll take a million bucks. But if what they're doing is a whole new service, then again, you just have to sit, sit back and say, is this right? How much is this going to cost? How much is this really going to cost? It's always nice to have something new and shiny, but you got to maintain what you got to.
Paula Geisler.
Typically, I don't see things done in a week. In fact, a lot of things take a long time, very long time. And people can get impatient. But the packet is prepared by staff. It's published in advance of the council meeting. It's access to the public can get it anytime, read the whole thing, print it, have it, come to the meetings. It's also videotaped after the fact. But we don't ever act on anything that's just now been presented unless it's part of the agenda.
Here's the question.
Yeah, it was a difficult question to answer. But everything is given notice to the public. That's the big thing. Do your business in public, give the public as much notice as possible. One of the things I've noticed is communication has just starting to improve. And I think what someone hit on was, it needs to be more venues than just the website. And it's becoming that. And we have hired a communications manager and he's doing a great job of getting into those digital formats that now I think people are going to be getting that information. But until then, there's been a gap. But as far as pushing a project through in a day or the same day, it doesn't happen. So, and we give a great deal of thought and research in, in advance of the council even getting it. And then even we can question it based on what, how staff presents it, what they found in their investigation. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Mark Winchettle.
Well, it's kind of a challenging question because it's, you know, are we building a new sewer lift station? Are we building a park? Are we building a water tower? So it's kind of, it depends on what that is. But, but there's always a process on how we do that, depending on the magnitude of the pro, the project, that we're, we're going to go through certain steps. I mean, obviously, we're going, we're going to need to do all the fact finding, do the research to find out, you know, is this something we need? Why we need it? What's, what's the reasoning for it? If it's something that, that as someone said, maybe is fluff, we would have that conversation here at the council. And again, nothing's going to happen at a meeting. I can guarantee you that. It drives me nuts because things don't go fast enough sometimes. But there is not, I mean, there, there is a process that is followed and it's gone through. If it's in your neighborhood and you're within X amount of feet, I wish I knew that. I don't know that. You would be notified with a letter. And, and one of the things that I've been learning more and more, I've been in city government all, pretty much all my life, is that people don't start getting involved until it's close to their house. Otherwise, it really doesn't matter. And, you know, so you, you try to get as much information out as possible. I don't know if there's ever a way that everyone can get every piece of information unless you're following our council packets week to week. Thank you. Sorry.
Please excuse our sign that just fell behind. Carry on.
We're doing a little repair here, so hang on a sec.
Yeah, it's not staying ice. We have to drop it.
It's, let's just move it. Thank you, everyone. Margot Stifel.
Will you repeat that, please?
Yes. Suppose a new resolution is on the agenda for next week. It is asking for some money for a new service for citizens. How would you decide how to vote?
Well, first of all, a resolution is just more like a formal motion. I agree with Paula when you say, yeah, you can have, let's make Margot Stifel Day and you can make it into a resolution, okay? So the resolution itself is kind of moot. But the wording of the resolution would have, what, what is this project? How much is it costing? Who is it affecting? And you're going to get all that information from, from the staff reports and the recommendations that they make. And you have that at a good, probably, well, maybe not a whole week ahead of time, but yeah, you get it like, from me working on packets, there's a lot of days when I was back there till nine o'clock at night so they could have it on the weekend to read. But anyway, so the question itself about how would I vote on a resolution, in my mind, is kind of moot because it's just a formal motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Hatfield, the next question comes to you first. Please discuss your thoughts on how, the role of how the city police department versus having the sheriff's office patrol the city as some other Carver County cities do.
You know, I think we're, we're incredibly lucky to have the Chaska Police Department in addition to the sheriff patrolling our, our city streets. I mean, ultimately, it's a larger presence and we're, we're safer because of it. You know, I grew up inside the police department with my mom working there, so I have a great respect for them. And I think, I mean, it really comes down to, I feel a lot safer. I had my garage broken into and, an officer was there in minutes. And now my garage was off, you know, off of my house. So it wasn't, I wasn't in any danger probably. But it, I, it felt good to know that they would be there that fast in, in Chaska. And not to say that the sheriff went, but I think we're just, we're lucky to have them. You know, it is additional cost, but we're, we're a lot safer because of it, especially as a growing city, as we keep attracting, you know, more people. That, that just drives up, you know, that can drive up crime numbers just with additional bodies. It just, it is just kind of how it happens. So I think, I think it's an important piece of our community and another reason people come to Chaska. They feel really safe here.
Thank you. Mark Winchettle.
You know, that's always, that's, that's a question that gets asked here constantly. And what's interesting about it is, is even though it's abnormal in Carver County, the Chaska's the only police department, anywhere else, it's, it's the other way around. So our police department started 125 years ago. So somebody long ago had the forefront to think that we needed a police department long before that we went to the sheriff's office. I think what our own local police department adds to us is services that we may not be able to get. So we had a troubled neighborhood that was going through a lot of problems. High rate of crime, a lot of drugs, truancy and things like that. And we were able to work with that neighborhood and go in there and have officers there, work with them more. And that area now has turned around, has not been as troublesome, has not caused the issues that we've had in the past. So there are definite benefits to have in your own police department. There are things that you can get that you might not department. There are things that you can get that you might not be able to get out of the sheriff's office, just because you pay for per hour of service for your city that you're using. Thank you.
Paula Geisler.
I was surprised to find out, actually, when I moved to Carver County, that we were the only city that had its own police department. But what I have found is that I feel much safer, for sure, that we have our officers right here at our disposal. And more important, I think the relationships that they develop out in the community, and to maybe turn a child around that is starting to head down the wrong way. And an officer will establish a relationship with that child, and encourage that child to get back on the right path. Just the representation is very positive. The response time is quicker. When you call 911, they're right there. And I just feel like it's more personal to have our own police department. Yes, there's a high expense to it, but I think every dollar is worth it if it saves one life or turns one life around. So I think they're invaluable to us.
Charles, oh, sorry. Were you done, Paula?
I'm sorry.
Were you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Charles Steck.
What the police department's a really hard question.
I can't hear you. Yeah, I can't hear either.
Bring your mic in a little bit.
Better? Hear me now? All right.
You can go ahead and aim that a little bit more towards yourself there. There you go.
It's a really hard question. And to be quite honest with you, I'm pretty sure either way, if we ask the sheriff to help us out, or if we have to ask the police to help us out, neither one of them, and I want to make this clear, wants crime to happen. It doesn't really matter. But what does matter is, you know, I'm not going to put the police department through, am I going to be there or not? That's not right either. As long as the costs are somewhat similar, I'm not going to get rid of the police department. If there's a huge difference in cost, then yes, we will talk about it. But as long as there's not a big difference in cost, then I won't.
Recently, I actually took over security as part of my human resources responsibilities. And I actually was surprised to find out that the city of Chaska was one of the few cities in the Carver County that have its own police department. I think equally, Carver County, Chaska Police, they're going to do a great job to keep us safe. I think the importance is that presence, that visibility can be a big deterrent of crime. You know, Mark talked about some of the extra services that you get when you own your own. And the ones he highlighted, hugely important, troubled neighborhoods, working with them together, building relationships. You know, I think we live in a day and age sometimes that police departments are getting attacked a little bit, or viewed differently. And really, it's the positive stories of building that relationship with the community, being part of that, and really understanding that police officer and that police force. And then it comes down to the simple things. One of the first things that happened when I moved to the city of Chaska about a house, is I went to work one morning, opened my door, my garage car's sitting right there, and there's a ticket sitting on it. And it says, you left your garage door open. We shut it. Thank you. Simple things like that, we're not going to get pride from the sheriff. Not that they don't care, but that meant a lot, because that is a huge vulnerability. And to have that, simple, they shut the garage door, they took care of me, really helped me respect what we have here in the city of Chaska, and that confidence that you have in being safe here in the city of Chaska.
I think we have too many cops, Chaska Police. If I was in the council, I would reduce those by half and go with the Carver County Sheriff. By reducing half, half to half, you, long-term, you don't have 20, 30 cops on the city payroll sucking off the, not the tit, but the, what do you get when you retire?
Pension?
Pensions. Going through Carver County, you won't have to worry about that. And then going back to how many cops we got, I can give you an example if I've got time. About three weeks ago, I live up in, out of On Road. And it's about 7:30, I went down to Cooper's to get some snacks. And they had a car stopped on Chaska Boulevard. One car stopped. By the time I got out of Cooper's, going back home, they had about 20 cars behind that car. I don't know if they were getting scared. And I seen a girl, it was a girl, and she's probably lucky that she didn't get shot.
Margot Stifel.
Okay, well, I worked for the sheriff's office for 12 years. And I think Chaska should have a police department because of the size of our city. And we've already got the investment in it. We've got the number of officers. But there's a lot of equipment involved in having a police department. And we have that equipment. And what we don't have, we share with the county. We could contract for services with the county, but you wouldn't get the 24-hour service that you have now. You get like Carver, where the cop goes through there, spends maybe an hour a day over there. The only time he comes back is if there is a call. And if they're busy somewhere else, Chaska Police might even have to go over there and cover for them. And I, years ago, the sheriff's office and the police department, I don't think they worked together very well, not at all. But since then, I think they've developed good relationships. And I certainly would keep the police department. You have to consider the other towns that we have in Carver County, too. They're little, small, like Hamburg, or Mayor, or something. They can't afford a police department. So of course, they have to contract. Anyway, I think they work together well, and we help each other. That's, I guess, all I have to say. Thank you.
Greg Anderson.
I thought going last would be a good, but I was wrong. I like the fact that we have our own police department. I like the fact that they're members of the community. I like the fact that I go to school events with parents, that my son goes to school with the children of the other police officers. I like the fact that the city's involved. I like the fact that they're engaged in, the way that they practice law enforcement is consistent with our values. Just as an example, and I don't know how many of you saw this, but this tragic thing that happened a few days ago with those two gals from Shakopee. And there was just this little thing in the report that a lot of people didn't notice. But the Chaska Police Department set up a little worming tent for the families of those girls while they were going through and doing the rescue. And I just thought that was just a class thing to do. They gave them some privacy, they made them comfortable. And that's not something you're going to get in other communities. You know, it's going to be very transactional. And so I think the police do a tremendous job, and I think it's one of the huge jewels in terms of, that Chaska has that other communities in the county certainly, and in the region, do not have.
Okay. Thank you. We now have time for one last question. Margot Stifel, you'll be the first to answer this one. What distinguishes you from the other candidates?
What's not to like, right? I didn't go into my background so much when I introduced myself, because I have it out on my flyers, and I have it on my Facebook site and stuff. So I didn't really think I needed to do that. But I feel that I have an extensive municipal background. I've done 12 years at the sheriff's department. I've worked on victim suspect statements, transcriptions for years. I even helped Chaska Police Department do theirs when they were behind. I've helped the deputies write their reports, so that they get grammar and periods and things, you know? Because I figure, if they look smart, I look smart. If I look smart, they look smart. So I've worked for Chaska as a senior clerk for 17 years. I ran elections. I did the council packets. I did planning packets. I've got a lot of background there. I did elections for 10 years for the whole city, and I did all the training. I spent hours and hours and hours counting ballots. I've also done the fire department for about three years. I was part-time and worked for the chief doing clerical. Oh, did you say time? Oh, but I have so much more to offer. Thank you.
Mine will be brief. I say what's on my mind. I don't have no regrets. I say what's on my mind.
Mark Winchettle.
Well, I think one of the things that I like to do the most is being out and about, and being at different events and festivities and whatever. But wherever you go, people want to come and be heard. And I think that's the most important thing, that you take the time and listen to people, what they have. We can't always tell everyone yes, but it's how you tell them no that's important. And it's really, there's a lot of people sometimes that just want to be heard. And I think that I'm good at listening. I feel that I'm good about working with the council. We have a council that works very well together. We don't necessarily always agree, but when it's over with, we're back on track, and we're moving forward. I think that that is some of the leadership that I bring to the council as well. I don't like talking about myself, so this is not the fun part. And the experience over the last nine years, I think, has really helped. It's taught me a lot. I've learned an awful lot in being mayor. I've been in city government for a long time, so I've listened to people's concerns and understand them. And I know that it's important to listen and be available to people. Thank you.
Paula Geisler.
Some of the things I didn't say about my background, I just wanted to specify that, that I've also been on the fire relief board, the fire board, the EDA, and the park board of the previous city I lived in. I also served as the chair of the Sibley County Economic Development Committee when I was there, and until I moved to Chaska. And I also worked with the Sibley County Sheriff's Department, who was our policing in our town. And so I was the liaison between the council and the police. And I've learned a great deal moving to Chaska about Chaska. And there's so much, it's, there's so much more to Chaska than I ever realized. I love this town. I think it's important to have communication. One of the things I feel extremely good about is that I've never missed a meeting in the four years I've been on the council. And I've been to nearly every event that's come up, and primarily because I want to talk to people, engage with people, and that's what I do at those events. I also receive lots of phone calls, and not always from people, just from my ward. But I'll still take care of them. I still point them to the right direction, or tell them who they need to go to, or get ahold of a person for them. So I spend a lot of time on the phone because I have the time to give. So, thank you.
John Gra.
First of all, I'm not going to rattle off a bunch of experiences that I've had. I'm young in my career, building and raising my family here. But I do offer a new perspective, a new voice. I really withhold the values of Chaska. And the first things I did when I knew I was going to decide, I took a picture of the value picture that's right outside that chambers here, because that's who I am. I believe that there is good, healthy disagreement. Too much in the days, officials, elected officials, others, individuals, if I disagree with you, I stop listening to you. And that's where we're lost. Healthy disagreement drives conversation, and those conversations drive good decisions. I really expect, respect every resident. I think it's important, you know, as Mark said, to make sure they're being heard and listened to. And lastly, to me, I've told people this, when they've asked me at the door, you know, what would you do, what drives you? It's my family. I have an easy filter. It's my kids. If I shouldn't, if I don't want them to do something I'm doing, then I shouldn't do it. And really, that is the filter that I've looked at this, and have looked at the conversations I've had with people, and really will guide me as a council member. If I wouldn't want my kids to do this, my six and my three-year-old, Elijah and Noah, I should not be doing it myself. I need to be that role model for them, and I want to be the role model for the residents of Chaska. Thank you.
Anderson.
Honestly, I think we would, the city would be well-served with any of the three of us were to get on the council. I'm delighted that we've got good people running. The reason that I, like Mark, I really don't like talking about myself, but I'm all in. You know, we moved down here, we bought our house, you know, the whole family wasn't 100% on board when we moved down. But within a year, everybody else was all in as well. I've got my business in town. I've been here for 21 years. You know, I'm here. I'm talking to people all the time. I'm kind of a cheerleader for Chaska. You know, it kind of goes with the territory. And I just think when you love something, and you're committed to it, and you, you know, we own property here, we're invested. And I think that I have an obligation to make a contribution. You know, I've been involved with a lot of organizations, you know, Rotary, Strive, I mean, all kinds of things that we've been involved with. But the fact is, is I'm really committed to this community. I like the way it's going. I like the direction, and I like the values. And so that's why I want to serve.
Michaela Hatfield.
I think that I bring a really unique voice and fresh perspective. Just, I was chatting with Mark before this, and about the importance of balance. And when you look at your elected representatives, do you see yourself on that, in those seats? And at times, I think that's maybe where we're lacking. And do the citizens of Chaska always see themselves up here sitting here? And so I think, for me, that's something I could bring to the table, definitely. There's a running joke amongst my coworkers that I'm obsessed with Chaska, and that's true. So they're always making fun of how much I love it here. So I'm deeply invested. I bought a home here a year and a half ago. Not going anywhere. I bought a historic brick home because that's just how much I love the history that's here. And I have a tremendous respect for the founding fathers of Chaska and what's been done. And I'm excited about its future, and want to be a part of that. And I've built myself into a place that would be good for that.
Sure. And I want to read what Gary was saying, is that all three of us are really good candidates. We're all very good. The thing that sets me apart from these two is that I've worked in government for a very long time. I've worked in anything from public works, to IT, to property taxes. I understand what people are going through when they raise the taxes. One of the things that, I'm also very invested in my community. My son was outside playing soccer in the snow on Sunday, because the ref said, you know what, we're not going to play unless you can see the field. The assistant coach came out and said, you know what, here's a shovel. We're going to do the lines. We still played. And I'm also invested in my community. I was saying that I'll be out raking leaves next week for senior citizens. I really want to stress that I love the community, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Candidates will now have one and a half minutes for their closing statement to summarize their qualifications and positions. Greg Anderson, you will be first.
I'm not sure I like this better than being last. I have to read this a little bit. Thank you for this opportunity. You know, as I look at what the job entails, it's basically to listen to the members of the ward, to share their voices with the rest of the council, so that as council members, we can discuss those ideas, and then choose a course of action for the city that's based on the values. And that filter that I referred to before, that, you know, does this fit our values? Does this meet our mission statement to be the best small town in Minnesota? And then we provide, then we basically turn these things over. We're, you know, we're essentially like an executive board, and we have some incredibly talented people that work at the city, that execute on these ideas and these initiatives. And our job is to provide leadership, it's to provide support, and then to let them execute, and then to stand behind them. And if we do that without any prejudice or bias, we're going to make the right decision, the majority of the the majority of the time. And if we don't, then we have to take responsibility, we've got to apologize, we've got to learn from it, and we've got to move on. And that's really what I see our role as, and I'd be delighted to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
John Gra.
I am the right person to represent Ward 1 in the city of Chaska. I'm never going to have all the answers, you may saw that here tonight, but I'm going to work with the people who do have the answers, the resource, and make the best decision on my heart and what the residents of Chaska want. I know that not everyone here is going to agree with what I said tonight, or what my stances have been before, and that's okay, I still respect you for that. I'll say it again, I truly believe healthy disagreement drives conversation, and through those conversations, better decisions are made. I've knocked on almost 1,000 doors, that's been my goal, and I've had hundreds of conversations with the residents of Chaska. I've always felt that if I want to represent you and Ward 1, I got to get to know you, and I've done that. Throughout my entire campaign, I focused on four key values that I feel a council personnel in the city should hold true. One, transparency. I will be transparent. We can do a better job at communicating with our residents. Honesty. It's simple. If I want my kids to be honest, I got to be honest. I pledge I will be honest with all issues in the city of Chaska. Respect. I will respect you, the established process, the norms, and the history of Chaska. All residents deserve to be respected and heard. And finally, service. I started with this conversation, saying I truly believe the best thing a person can do in their life is to have a positive impact to serve others and make a difference in their lives, and I believe I can do that to my, to the best of my ability. I will keep working to earn your vote. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you at your door soon. Thank you.
Charles Steck.
So, I wanted to hit on what I said earlier. My goals for Chaska is to maintain our buildings and maintain our roads, building a library, the Lyons Park renovation, sustainable growth, and stopping the power plant. One of the things that really kind of sets me apart is I will also fight very, very hard for Ward 3. That has always been my goal, and I will fight for you. And I want to stress to everybody, make sure that you look up all your candidates. Yesterday, I was nearly hit by a guy who drove up next to me when I was walking out, and he said, "You know, I'm sorry I voted for the other guy, I wish I would have voted for you." Make sure that you sit down and take a look at your candidates before you vote. It's really important that you know your candidates, and yeah, I realize this is a city, and not everybody cares as much about the city, but it really does matter. The city does matter to you, and thank you for having me. Thank you for coming out.
Paula Geisler.
One of the things that I appreciate most of all is, the last four years, is how well our council does function. As Mark had said, we really listen to each other. We've disagreed, but we can come back after that disagreement and carry on the business of the city. I'm a problem solver, that's what I've done my whole life, and so, if somebody brings a problem or an issue to me, I stay with them until it's resolved. I'll take care of the problem, I'll get them to the right person. I care about finding closure for somebody who has an issue and needs it taken care of. We have a very talented staff here, and that's, we are so fortunate, it's not like this in other cities, and they give us a great deal of information, great deal of research, but even with that, I will take the packet, and I read every word of it, and can report back to staff errors that I see, date errors, or just typos, or whatever, but beyond that, I study what's in the packet, I ask questions. And that's primarily what I do, is ask questions, and the best way to come to a decision is to ask questions and have the right answers, so. But I'm open to communication with anybody, they can call me anytime they want, I'll be happy to discuss any issue that they would like. And I just, I love serving the people of Ward 1, and I would be honored to have your vote on Election Day for Ward 1. Thank you very much.
Margot Steffel.
First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and for inviting me to participate, but I especially want to thank all the residents and business owners who took the time to attend and learn about the candidates. As your mayor, I'll strive to promote affordable housing so that residents can live and grow their families in Chaska. I will not compare Chaska to other neighboring communities and say, "We have met our affordable housing ratio, so we should not have to do more." I will continue to work on issues affecting our downtown businesses and encourage new business in the area. I will support our business owners by patronizing them. Our residents should be proud of the condition of our city buildings and facilities, and I will keep working until I see improvements in the general cleaning, maintenance, and updating of them. You know why you had to get more chairs in here? Because they've been here over 20 years. I bet over half of them are broken. I've worked hard at two jobs most of my life, and I'll work hard for you as my mayor. You can expect me to listen to your concerns and address your concerns to the best of my ability, and I'll attend so many pancake breakfasts, fish fries, and ribbon cuttings, that if, after nine years of service, residents don't know my name, then I didn't do my job.
Okay. Thank you. Mark Winchettle.
Tough to follow. Once again, I'd like to thank the League for hosting tonight, and everyone for attending, it was greatly appreciated. The people have a choice on November 6th. We have a group of candidates that I think have a diverse set of skills, and anyone can make a difference in Chaska. I feel I'm the best candidate, because I've been a devoted resident and volunteer for Chaska for 45 years. I have integrity, I've always put others before myself. I will continue to put our city's interests, our city's best interests first, excuse me. Common sense, I've never been a politician, but I think that if we apply common sense to our decision-making, we will be served well by the city. Experience, over the past nine years as mayor, I think my record speaks for itself. We have not been afraid to make bold, hard decisions. We have been thorough, gathered all the facts, and in doing so, we made decisions easier, and from my viewpoint, they have all been good decisions. Leadership, as a mayor, leadership is an important quality to have. I feel that I've shown that over the past years. While we have had, we have made difficult decisions, we have always been able to get along. We may not always agree, but after the vote, the issue is over, and we've moved on, which is important, so that we, as a council, can continue to work together and make Chaska a better place. I would certainly appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Doug Williams.
Mine'll be brief. It's, like I said in my opening statement, I'm for high freeze, slow growth, to keep this hometown feeling. You got to do that with slow growth, and hopefully, the voters can replace the whole council and start out fresh.
Thank you all again for being here. I continue to be impressed with all of you, the residents of Chaska, and your dedication to what happens here in our town. I encourage you to review the literature that's available out on the table, look at our websites, look at our Facebooks, engage us, call us up, send us emails, send us messages, so that you're, you know, in order to make an informed decision on November 6th, definitely encourage that. I personally would love it if you emailed me or reached out on Facebook, I'd love to continue the conversation we started here tonight, if you have questions about any of my answers, or just would like to talk about something, I'd love to do that. Chaska's inspired me to be the person I am today, including how I've led in my years of leadership experience, how I've served, and the different community, ways I've given back to the community, and I'm passionate about Chaska, and that's really what it comes down to. So, I've walked with Chaska for 30 years, and now I'm running to be your city council. Thank you.
I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. And now for our closing, here is League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County President, Maria Moller.
The League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County would like to thank you all for coming tonight, and our online audience for viewing. We would especially like to thank all of our candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office, and for being willing to serve our community. The League researches issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what we do, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table, or visit us at l w v m n dot org. Membership is open to all people ages 16 and older. You can find more information about candidates and about voting at m n votes dot org and l w v m n dot org. This forum is being recorded by Chaska Community Television, and will be available online at the Chaska YouTube channel. A link will also be available on the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County Facebook page, and on the League of Women Voters Minnesota website. Again, thank you all for coming tonight, and remember to vote on November 6th.